Sacred Central School Board, our regular Board of Education meeting Monday, December eleventh, uh, time is seven oh five. The role reflects, uh, Mr. Redman and Mr. Huger not with us at this time. All other members are present. Was the meeting properly notified?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Uh, do we have anybody with public comment at this time? Okay, hearing none, we'll move down, uh, to our highlight on youth, which is our holiday performance by our high school music students. Welcome. Have you come up and introduce yourself?
So this is, uh, what is known as the Rare Choir. Riley, Ellie, Robin, and Emma. They, uh, um, have been, uh, long story short, they got put in my class. It was supposed to be a show choir, but four people don't make a show choir. So, um, they've been doing a lot of a cappella stuff, uh, this semester and have been doing a really good job. So I thought I would bring them here to showcase some classic, um, holiday carols for you. And my high-tech keyboard on my phone, so they were.
In the bleak midwinter, frosty wind made moan. Bursting hard as iron, water like a stone. Snow has fallen, snow on snow, snow on snow. In the bleak midwinter, long gone ago. Angels and orch angels may have gathered there. Chirp a mew that stirrup him, throned in the air. But his mother, holy, thin who made an bliss. Worship the beloved with a kiss. In the bleak midwinter, frosty wind made moan. Bursting hard as iron, water like a stone. Snow has fallen, snow on snow, snow on snow. In the bleak midwinter, long gone ago. It came upon the midnight queer, that glorious sun abode. From angels bending near the earth, to touch their hearts of gold. Peace on the earth, goodwill to them, from heaven's all gracious king. The world in solemn stillness lay, to hear the angels sing. For though the days are hasting on, thy prophets large foretold. When with the ever-circling years, comes round the age of gold. When Bishel over all the earth, his ancient splendors gleam. And the whole world sent back the song, which now the angels sing. It came upon the midnight queer, that glorious sun abode. From angels bending near the earth, to touch their hearts of gold. Peace on the earth, goodwill to them, from heaven's all gracious king. The world in solemn stillness lay, to hear the angels sing.
And if you follow the National Anthem, it's usually eastward.
Nice job.
Thank you very much. It's always a pleasure to, uh, listen to our choir and get our, uh, music.
Before you leave, could you tell them about the Oliver Trials, please?
Sure. Um, so last week, uh, we had two days of auditions for, um, the high school musical Oliver. It was open from, uh, for eighth graders through twelfth grade, and I had seventy kids audition.
Wow.
So.
Super.
It was awesome. Um, the cast list is coming out on Wednesday. And what I do for, um, school productions, when I direct school productions, is I don't just put up a cast list. Um, what I do is I write them all a letter and tell them what they got and what they did well in the audition and what, uh, they can do to improve so we can keep building our program. So I had seventy letters straight this weekend. So, um, so it was a long weekend, but I feel like that's how we get our kids to do better. So that was something else this week, and we start, um, practices in January. Uh, Mr. Conway is getting some kids ready to play in the pit. Um, so we're gonna have a full-on, um, kid-filled pit with some professionals. And so hopefully in March, we'll have a really big show to show you guys, so we're gonna be excited about it.
Awesome. Good work. Thank you for the wonderful things.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the performance. Always a highlight of the year. Okay, um, this time, uh, comments from board members and superintendent, do we have anything this time? Uh, the only thing that I've, uh, became aware of today is a quick note. The annual board, uh, pack meeting for CISA eleven has been scheduled for March twenty-first. Starts its dinner at six o'clock and there'll be a speaker there afterwards. Uh, they've, uh, apparently rounded up, uh, Leroy Butler from, uh, Green Bay Packers will be doing a presentation. She's, uh, quite the speaker apparently, so it'll be something to look forward to. So if anybody is interested, uh, we'll probably start signing up for that probably on either January or February. So they get a head count of who's coming for dinner on, uh, March. Is there anything else?
Yeah, one thing, I guess, um, Pam's been working with, uh, Chad and Amanda Olson to figure out how to get these board meetings, um, posted on the school district website and YouTube channel. So, um, I think this, so will we retroactively post some, Pam, or will just choose this one?
The November twentieth will be the first one.
Okay. So again, all these are recorded, obviously. Um, but they'll be put on the website, made available on our district, uh, YouTube channel and on our website at Board of Education page.
If an individual was requesting one from archives, is that available?
Yeah, they're all back, they all are.
You can, you can find them.
Yeah, from the past few years, yeah.
Okay, and then I got a, um, email from, uh, Representative Staff Schultz's office a couple of days ago wondering about input on a bill that he was considering, um, supporting, co-sponsoring. And I sent it to Tim and to Jeff. I did, I didn't know how big we wanted anyone that wants to read it. Ken, but my hair was falling out reading it. In my opinion, basically, it turns into the same thing that everything does. It's a winner and loser situation. Um, it's exempting, um, future referendum from impacting aid, but only to districts that have negative tertiary aid. So if you have a high property value. So it's somebody's pet project, in my view. And I asked, uh, Representative Staff Schultz to not only not co-sponsor, but to not support it and told him my feelings of why. If anyone else has input, um, you can go right to him or you can send me something and I'll forward it on. But it does show that the invitation to have him here and developing a relationship, um, could be very fruitful for school, for kids.
Is there anything else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, uh, scheduled presentations. I don't believe we have any at this time. Uh, we'll move on to the financial reports, uh, the treasurer's report.
Bank account balances as of November thirtieth, twenty seventeen. Citizens state checking, two hundred forty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-three cents. Citizens money market, eleven thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars fifty-five cents. Citizens money market fund, forty-six, fifty dollars fifty-two cents. Citizens money market suicide prevention fund, sixteen thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-four cents. American deposit management referendum proceeds, four hundred and seventy-five thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. For total bank account balances of seven hundred and fifty-one thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report? So, second. Okay, I have motion David, second Kirk, to accept the treasurer's report as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, consideration of our consent agenda, which, uh, consists of our SCC board meeting minutes for November twentieth. Our approval of our bi-monthly bills of December two thousand, December two thousand seventeen. Approval of, uh, retirements, resignations, uh, Rebecca Erman. Approval of appointments and contract modifications. Kim Gunderson from Secretary to Special Education, Teaching and Learning Head Secretary. Aaron DeSalo is middle school girls' basketball coach, uh, one-year contract. Brian Millar from one FTE to halftime assistant track coach. Approval of curricular modification requests, uh, for students to enroll in full-time and part-time virtual-led courses. We have two, uh, part-time students. Also, we have approval of a termination of Kathy Hall, a five-and-a-half-hour high school housekeeper. Who to accept the agenda as presented?
Second.
We have a motion David, second Kay, to accept the, uh, consent agenda as presented. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is our DPR school report cards presentation by our Director of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Webb.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have according to clock, exactly forty minutes to go through this, but my computer is still wired as if we were still in that energy consumption mode, so it shuts off at eight o'clock, so here we go. All right. Overall, you can see our report card is up there. There's a snapshot just of our overall score for our district. For the most part, I will cover district pieces and then have some data for each of the buildings as we go through. Uh, this can be about a five-slide presentation or about a twenty-six-slide presentation. You guys can choose if you go. All right, buddy. Seventy-six makes us a four-star rated school. Again, the star rating is something they added in, um, two years ago and puts us in that exceeds expectations category. All right? Sneak peek of overall what we're looking at. We had one school significantly exceed expectation, one exceed expectation, and one need expectation. So the good news is we're all in the green. Bad news is we're all a different score. And the other good news is, though, that we are working already before this report card came out to make it better for next year. So I'll talk about that more as we go. You can see down at the bottom, kind of a low average and high score. I'm not gonna go through those. You can just kind of take a peek to see what those look like. We'll get in on it in more detail as we go. As with a lot of things in education and legislation, they keep changing stuff for us. So these are a couple of the changes that they had from this year. Test participation is no longer part of the report card score. Actually, that came in a year ago because there were school districts, especially, uh, in the south half of the state that had very high, um, percentages of test out and stuff, so they took that off the report card. They still report that on page sixteen of the report card. We're at ninety-eight point four percent participation rate. So we're still, uh, in a very good place there. Participation will be calculated on the federal report card. We don't know what that looks like, when it's coming out, but it is coming at some point in the future. And they will take into account test participation, but they're, again, will be setting good for that. This is the second year, again, of the forward exam. So in this report card, there's no more WKCD, if you remember that from way back. There's one year of the Badger, the one year we had it, and two years of the forward that are figured into most of this. And then value added is calculated for the growth area of the report card. And I'll talk about that a little bit more. It's a two-year, um, component. Question so far? All right. Just to give you a little kind of overview of how complicated this gets and again, how it continues to change. Prior to twenty fifteen, you can see the four growth, uh, the four areas of the report card were all weighted twenty-five percent. They still are kindness, all weighted twenty-five percent, but gaps and on-track readiness are twenty-five percent each. And then the other category is fifty percent total for student achievement, student growth. That varies based on your, um, economically disadvantaged percentages in your district. We have a very low percentage in St. Croix Central, so more of our weight goes towards our achievement compared to our growth. And I'll show you on the next page the calculator that's used because you can actually plug that in. But thirty-eight percent of the fifty percent goes towards our student achievement, um, compared to only eleven point eight for our, uh, student growth. So just getting kind of background information. This is the fancy-dancy calculator you use to figure that out. They provide that for us in case we want to look at it. But you can kind of see over here, I have fifteen point two on the scale. That's where we sit for economically disadvantaged. And, uh, then that figures out based on that, our weighting down in here. So you can see that thirty-eight and some change, eleven point eight, twenty-five, twenty-five is how we're, those two scores are broken down. All right? Overall, look at our summary compared to the state. The three buildings and then the district. Remember, a virtual school. Because there's greater than fifty percent open enrollment in that, that is not counted in our report card. They get an alternate rating, and we fill out a form every fall to go through and show if we have growth or don't have growth of our students, but that's not counted in the report card. So that's why you just see the three, um, brick-and-mortar buildings, um, and the district score. So I'm just gonna let you digest that for a few seconds. Again, the blue score is St. Croix Central. The red score is the state average. And again, these are all scores based on a hundred percent, but they're not a strict percentage per se. Questions, just looking there?
How closely related or what is the correlation between closing gaps and student growth?
The correlation between growth and gaps, I think, just so I answer it more accurately as we go through, I'm gonna defer and tell that point, but they are two different, completely different measures, if that makes sense. Gaps looks at the regular group of students versus any subgroups compared to the, um, growth is how much they're improving overall on what they call a bad, value-added score. So, but I'll get more detail with that. What I want to point out in the middle here, the closing gaps for the high school, the exclamation mark afterwards isn't because I was excited. That's how it's notated on the report card. Because if you are, again, it's all numbers, but if you have a point nine zero zero great, or greater score in that area, it automatically is kicked into what the highest score in the state is. So in this case, somebody else must have had a hundred percent, so we get a hundred percent. So that's what that exclamation mark notates there. And that's just part of the score calculation. We didn't have a hundred percent graduation rate on closing, or gap rate. We were really close, but because of that, they basically rounded up. I guess it's the easy way to put it. Other questions on that? It just gives you an overview of where we sit. Okay, again, there are the four areas, and David, this'll hopefully help distinguish that a little bit for you. The first one's all about proficiency on the achievement side. Growth, again, is based some on economically disadvantaged. Growth is weighted over two years' time. The current year gets more weight. I'll explain that a little bit on one of the next slides here. Again, closing gaps looking at the subgroups, again, at ELA and math and graduation gaps. And then the last area takes into consideration attendance and graduation rates, and then ELA and eighth-grade math scores.
So the way they're scoring these, Glenn, is it safe to say that to close the gaps, you have to have the student growth there, but maybe not necessarily for the entire population, just for the subsets?
Yeah, you gotta, basically, you gotta move all kids up. Get all kids so they're achieving, um, you know, at least at the basic level or higher. And again, I'll talk about that as you get into the score. You get no points for students that, um, scored the bottom category during the low basic. So in order to, you gotta move all students up, and then any students that, you know, there are students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, um, some other areas similar to that. You have to make sure those students are achieving as well as your typical student.
Okay, closing the gap is bringing some of those.
Yep, subgroup master.
Then the whole, okay. Thank you.
All right. So first area, student achievement, you're looking at math and ELA. All students, all grades tested for the district report card. And three years of data are taken into consideration. So you can see there how we compare to the state, both in overall student achievement for our district and in ELA and math. The good news is we're above the state average. The bad news is we're talking about being just above the state average. You know, that's something that we've looked at as an admin team and said, we're gonna make significantly better in the future. Is our, is our goal, um, looking at next year already. And I'll talk at the end about some things we're doing already that we started even at the beginning of the year before we even knew what this looked like. So, um, that's kind of the achievement side of it. These are the things that you have to look at when you dig in. Again, I can, if you want this detail, I can go into it briefly, or I can just kind of skim it. But basically, as I said before, you get more credit for the higher student score. So advanced students get one point five multiplier, one point oh for proficient, point five for basic, and nothing for below basic. Okay? And then, as you go across here, fourteen fifteen would have been worth one point for multiplier, fifteen sixteen for one point two five, and the current year would have been worth one point five. So there's all these different multipliers that come into play while they're figuring out the scores. Again, if you wanna dig into the math side of all of this, David, maybe in your spare time, you'd wanna look at this technical guide. I can give you the live link. It goes through all of the different ways to figure it out and examples, so it is, uh, a lot of fun. The other thing I just wanted, again, note that we talked about earlier, this fourteen fifteen year, that was the Badger, which was the one-year test that we took. And then the last two years are the forward exams. Now, if you really dig into the scores, you'll see the Badger score, a lot of it was significantly higher, especially the students that were advanced, and then we fall off with the forward, it kind of levels out. So there's some things we're gonna have to look at when it goes into next years, when that one falls off and then you have three years forward, at least that's what's in consistency to look at. It could be an advantage for us, depending on how it's calculated, and it could, um, affect our scores in a negative way for a year as well. So we're looking at that, figuring it out, talking about it as we go. Questions on that side of it? All right. So again, I have all of the information for all three buildings and the district layout since the inception of the tests. So I'm just gonna kind of flash it, let you look at it. If you have a question, um, feel free to ask, but otherwise, we'll, we'll move fairly quickly over this. For all these slides, you'll see student achievement is listed here, but it's not on the graph. The two components within are on the graph. The orange goes with the orange, the gray with the gray. That's the way all the slides should look as you go through. And this is just the overall score for the report cards up here. That's a little, the slide's a little bit different for the district one. Okay, so that's elementary achievement, middle school achievement. And what I can do is to share this out with all of you or with any of you that want it. And just give you a counter to this presentation, go through it again as well. High school. Interesting thing to see with the high school, maybe. Overall score going up. Student achievement, the last three years going down. So. That's all, again, due to the graduation rates that we're putting together. But overall achievement is dropping a little bit. The graduation rates have been going up, so that.
What, what's the metrics echo in achievement?
Math and ELA, so you're talking, um, high school ECT, ELA and math, junior year, all those. Including the, uh, din- dynamic. including the dynamic learning math.
Does that include all students in sixteen seventeen? And in previous years, it was only those.
Three year, three year, I haven't told them.
But A C T started as a mandatory what year?
Three years ago. I think this is our third year with A C T data. So there's what you're looking at. So high school, you're looking at A C T and dynamic learning math, which is um students, the I D students that take that, those exams. Those are bigger than the achievement side. And there's the, there's the breakdown if you can see that slide, John.
So this will be our third year where A C T is?
I believe that is correct, right?
Yeah, so eighteen is our third year. So seventeen, so six, only sixteen.
So this has two.
Only has one, right?
My, last year when I reported that included all students. So now this will be the second year. This year will be the third year that all kids.
So we're, we have lag on the, on your graph, so there's only one year of the.
I'm pretty sure it's two years of A C T on this graph. But I'll, I'll clarify that and let you know.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's the achievement side of it. John, that helped you with the measures?
Okay.
And then, John, right here, when I talked about the multipliers.
Yeah.
Alright, and then the district achievement. You know, that's gonna be our just overall achievement. That's how our report card scores there. I left that one off on the district because we looked at it already. So you can see our achievement, E L A is moving upward and math is falling off a couple of points. So that's something that we've been talking about since the summer, actually, before this information came out. Because we knew what our forward exams and um A C T stuff looked like. So those are things that we're working on already, trying to make some changes. There's also some other factors that played into that. We feel as well, but bottom line is we're looking to get better in all areas. So. Questions on achievement?
Do we receive information from the state and all other schools, at least relative to where we fall?
It's available and actually, we've broken that all down, I think. And Tim had his um newsletter where we, as a district, a hundred and twenty ninth.
Yeah, I would say one twenty nine or one thirty nine. Yeah.
Some, yeah, out of roughly four hundred and twenty two districts. And then we've broken down each of the elementaries, I have a spreadsheet, or each of the buildings and a spreadsheet as far as how we fall in there.
Sure, and I'm more interested in actual school districts, so you can see that the highest achieving math districts and you can contact them. What's your curriculum look like? What are, what are you doing that we're not doing?
Yeah, I have spreadsheets put together with the top ten compared to us for, and broke down with all these areas. So we haven't fully um built into those, but we've reviewed them once already. Okay? Other questions on achievement? Alright, student growth is the next area. This is, again, based on their pace of improvement. It's only E L A and math. This does not calculate, there's no growth calculation for B L M. And also, we don't have a growth calculation at the high school because all we use is A C T at the eleventh grade. Right now, they do not take into account the aspire that they take as a freshman and sophomore. So there's a lot of discussion about that being added, but they haven't figured out how that correlates exactly yet. So even though it's an A C T product, it's not, it's not the same. So they're working on that. Again, this is a value added score, so it's a small little number. If you're a four point age or higher, you get the full fifty points. State average for math and E L A is three point oh. And really, it's set up on a pre-test, post-test basis. So the third grade math test is the pre-test, they count the fourth grade. And then they do the same with like seventh grade math and eighth grade math. So elementary is the reading side of it. Middle school is the math side of it that they figured in. Okay? Again, they have this whole value added matrix. Basically, what they're looking at there is they're predicting how the student should do and then taking how they actually do. And then it's either if they do better than predicted, your value added score is typically higher than three. If they do worse than what predicted, it's more than three. So that's how that figures out. School growth and district growth are different. Um, district growth, basically, they take all the scores for our district and combine them together like it's just one big pool of kids. They don't take the averages from each building and put them together. And then this year is the first year they calculated it that way. Um, compared to in the past, they just compared you to other districts similar to you for the district score. Okay? So there is no comparison this year to last year as far as growth for the district because it's completely different um figure.
How was a predictor determined, Glenn? Like, I mean, somebody's gonna decide we think that student should hit here.
It's, it's all a big matrix, say, it was like I said, if, if you wanna tear into the technical guide, it all goes through it. But to be honest, I couldn't explain it in.
Lots of words and numbers.
Lots of words and numbers, but it sounds like a little gibberish in less than two minutes. So it's just a.
There's a formula behind it, though.
Yeah, there's a lot of math behind all these calculations. And that's why typically, when they say it'll be out in August and it comes out the first week of, or second week of November, it's because the calculations are very complicated. They send it out to districts, the districts find errors, they send it back, and then it's back and forth. So.
Right.
Alright? And again, I'm, I'm getting to know this better, but it's so complicated in nature, it's hard for, for me to even go through and explain it all after spending quite a lot of time with it. But every time I go through it, even tonight, compared to last week, when I went through it with the admin, I feel a lot better about some of the components, but it's just a continual learning because it's continually changing as well. So that's, that's as much as I can explain. I'm happy, if anyone has more questions, I can dive into it with you individually in a, a different time as well. And here's what our scores would look like for our district in E L A and math. Again, three point oh is that average, so we're just above that in E L A. And in math, significantly below that, three point oh average or target. This is what's counted. All the students, this supplemental data is simply that, it's just more information. It's not actually calculated yet. So just these numbers up here create the scores. Down here is just extra information. Questions on the growth at all before I run through the charts? Anything else? Okay, so here you can see elementary, again, kinda set up that same way. Overall score here. Blue is E L A, math being the yellow. Again, the charts are kinda, they're a little skewed. They look like there's a lot greater discrepancy than what there maybe is on some of them because of the low numbers. But overall, you can get the point between the two. So that's elementary. And again, this is since they started doing the report cards. Remember fourteen fifteen, there wasn't a report card. And the first year, eleven twelve, there wasn't a district report card. There's our middle school growth. District growth, I must have.
High school doesn't have growth.
Oh, that's right, thanks, Dirk.
You're welcome.
High school doesn't have growth, that's why there isn't a growth chart. Confused for a moment there. Alright, so again, you just see the four for the district because of the only four years, not five. Questions on the growth side of it? Okay, we'll get into the closing gaps. Now then, this is looking at achievement and graduation between the subgroups. Achievements, again, E L A and math. Graduation is a four-year and six-year cohort. Again, that's another change they made from when they first started. You were just, when they first started, you were basically graded on kids that graduated after four years. But they didn't take into account, maybe a student with special needs that's gonna take a five-year program or a six-year program. Or that super senior um student that didn't finish on time and came back and finished the following fall. First year, it was calculated, they just said, yep, you don't get credit for all of those. Then they added, actually, they have a fifth year and a sixth year cohort, but they base it off of four and six. Okay? That's what they're looking at as far as the comparisons. It's like little student with disabilities, B L L, economically disadvantaged versus a statewide comparison group. We don't have some of these scores because we don't have enough students to make a group. So then they combine them into supergroups. And we do get scores on a district level, but like in high school, we don't have enough in some of the areas even to make a gap score with a supergroup. And that's why, again, we get more weight towards our graduation rate. Graduation rate being very high, that's why that score is very high at the high school as well. Achievement side of it is pretty good, but that graduation rate being up at ninety eight percent or whatever overall is, is really driving that. Okay? Here's just a, again, a picture of one of the charts that you can see within the report card, looking at subgroups. Students with disabilities can see our student scores over the last five years compared to the state. Gives us a negative point zero two. Subtract their state comparison group, gives us a negative score there overall. So we're not closing the gap as fast as we should be on average. Um, if we were, if you look down below, we're just barely a positive score with our economically disadvantaged. Um, that's because we are closing that gap a little bit faster. Okay? But again, not a huge number there, but another thing that we're working on and looking at on a daily basis.
Does it take into account where the gap started in the, in the very beginning because it's harder to close a narrow gap?
Yep, and also at the, at the top end with the graduation gap, um as I talked about with that exclamation mark, they basically round it up so it doesn't count against you if your gaps are really narrow. Alright? Alright, looking at gaps again for each of the buildings. Again, here you see that real skew with the graph. And again, how they changed the calculation over time. You can see these first three years, we've had enough students in those areas to have a gap score in E L A and math. And now the last two, we have not. So all the weight then bumps to the uh graduation side of it. So that being really strong helps. But again, our achievement was decent as well for the state. Alright? And there's your district gap. You can see those things ultimately staying pretty steady. Questions on the gap scores? Okay, we talked about admin team. This is a one to two day workshop to break this all down and see some. We put it together into an hour and now trying to put it together into about thirty minutes. It's, it's an overview problem, but I'm happy to spend time with anybody that wants more information on it.
Well, I, I, my desire, since I, I looked at some of the details of the thing, is I think the board needs to look at detail of this thing. And I think it would be best addressed at a, a future board learning session. Some of the trends that disturbed me were, A, some of the achievement gaps started falling off, but looking at the different subgroups and seeing how um our levels of proficient and advanced students have been trending downwards rather than upwards. And that's a major concern for me. And I think uh this board needs to find out, you know, a little bit of what the causes of that might be. Are we looking at different cohorts? Are we doing different testing? Uh, what it might be. We've put a lot of resources into this thing to get this stuff to move forward. And it's, it's like we're sliding backwards and I don't understand it. And so I think we're gonna have to dig into the details, find out. I don't know if that's something that could be put together for January or we'd be better off putting it off till our first meeting in February.
It is readily available. We can do that at any time. We've looked at all that information. And again, one of the biggest things when you dig into that, you have to look at the difference between that Badger test and a forward exam. Because that's where, you know, you had, I'm just gonna throw rough numbers, but you had seventy kids advanced on the Badger. The following year, you had fifteen kids advanced on the forward exam. They're completely different. You can't, you really can't compare them. There's a lot of discussion at the state that they considered even taking the Badger, the uh, the Badger test off because it is so jaded as far as that goes. With that said, we're still looking at, okay, what do we need to do to make sure we continue to move kids up into those ranges?
Because, because the trends, even looking at the last two years, are still trending downward, not upward.
In our advanced numbers, yep. So that's something, if, if the board wants to go into it at that level, we can have it.
I think we need to.
Next board learning meeting if you want it.
I think we need to.
So.
So. So we have, we have to get to the bottom of it and sooner than later.
And again, just, you know, as I said earlier, this is something we started looking at this summer before the report card was ever out because we had our forward exam data and our A C T data. So I'll talk just at the end, some of the things that we've been doing already to, to work on those. So we're, we're very confident that we're gonna see significant improvement already for this spring's test, so.
And Howard, I had a conversation with Tim a little bit on this and I just said, do, do we know what the key drivers are? Do you know what the root is? And is there a plan to move forward from that? And, you know, we can get really lost in how each of these numbers are made up and the data matters. I, I'm more concerned that Tim and Glenn and the admin team can say, this is what the numbers are telling us. This is the driver, this is the root cause as to why we are not performing or why we're sliding. And here's the plan to change the direction or improve the outcome. So I, I, and I asked Tim and I have every confidence that, and Tim says, yes, we have a plan that, you know, there's, there's a plan that can come with it. So um I, I'm more interested in what's the plan than every last.
And what's the problem?
Well, we wanna know the driver, the source and, and the solution, but I don't, I don't need to know, I personally, I don't need to know that Badger influenced it this much and the forward did this and that causes this calculation. If, if we have slippage and it's legitimate slippage, why are we slipping? And what are we doing about that?
And I think that's, it's gonna take more time than what we have available tonight. And I think that, that should be the, the heart of the meeting. Go into that detail, you know. Go into that detail, you know, it's, we're seeing the trends. I wanna know, you know, are we aware of what the trends are? We've got some idea of, you know, what the cause is and what the plan is to get us back on track. And I think that's, it's gonna take a little more detail than what we're getting here tonight. And I think, uh, in order for us to find out how the, how the resources are being used right now. And if there are additional resources we have to put forward in that, then it's time to get it done. Because we'll be coming up on another budgeting season. And we need to prepare for that.
Sounds good. Any other questions or input before we go into the last area? All right, given the on-track full secondary readiness, looking at how they're doing third grade, eighth grade, attendance wise and graduation. Okay, that's basically the, the summary of it. When you look at the attendance, it's the average of all the students versus the lowest subgroup. Graduation rate, high school, primarily elementary, middle school attendance. Both of those going to account on middle school, or excuse me, the district report card. But then depending on which report card it is, depends on which factors go into it. Okay, and then third grade ELA and eighth grade math. They're talking about other metrics in the future to add more to this component area, but that's what it, that's what it is right now. Okay, elementary readiness, getting your attendance rates, just about identical, just a little bit off. Again, this isn't a percentage of attendance. We don't have seventy-six percent attendance rate. We have a seventy-six point nine score on attendance out of eighty.
Glenn, were you serious about eight o'clock?
Yes, it will. Yep, I have about five minutes. Yep, I wasn't kidding about that at all. Someday I have to get that fixed. All right, so that's, uh, readiness there. So again, attendance similar to middle school. Even talking about very high rate. Our math achievement out of twenty. Again, as Howard has mentioned, looking at the trends, we know where those are going. We have some really good idea of why and working on plans to make that better. We've implemented a lot of things already. High school, and you're looking at that graduation rate. And then you had three years of ACT performance. And that is no longer calculated that way because they went to the ACT. So we would have two years scattered in the straight ACT information. Before that, it was the participation performance of basically our sixty, sixty-five percent of our seniors. Okay? District readiness, can you have an overall score or graduation? Percentage is out of forty, attendance out of forty. The first two years, it was ELA achievement out of five, then out of ten, same with math. Two years of ACT performance, because again, there have only been four report cards from the district, not five. So you can see where we stand there. Questions on readiness? Okay. Basically what we've done, what we're working on, where we're going, you know, breaking down to the details. We could have easily spent three hours here going through those, but didn't think that was what we were looking for overall. We spent one hour so far, um, last week. We have these worksheets developed for each building and the district that the principals were going back and filling out between themselves and their staff. Kind of a, a work-through piece looking at it. We'll be going over those tomorrow in our admin meeting. Um, also, all this information was put together into, you know, one spreadsheet for each building, tracking since two thousand eleven. So they had that in their hands. So that's what we've done just recently with the report card piece. Last January, as I think you all know, we started reviewing all of our curriculum, K-12, working on, um, realigning to essential standards. We've started now the next step of writing rubrics and assessments this fall, along with meeting vertically. To align our curriculum, to make sure, you know, what we're teaching in the third grade lines up with what we're teaching before that and after that. We had our first real meeting to do that a month ago and we'll continue to add those into our monthly PD, um, agendas. All aspects of standards-based grading and reporting that we're looking at, um, again, so we can specifically target. Here's the essential standard we want kids to reach. Are they reaching it or not? If they're not, okay, what are we gonna do? Do they already know it? Okay, what are we gonna do? If you're somewhere in the middle, then we're gonna continue to learn and, um, work on those things. So that's a component. We've broken down into each area basically and created using our EduClimber, our new data warehouse management system. We have a list of all the kids that are below basic. So we can look and say, there's the name, there's the face. What do we need to do? Move them up, same with basic, same with proficient, same with advanced. What are we gonna do to continue to challenge them? So that's in the works, that's in the hands of, um, all the buildings. Motivation, we clearly think motivation is an issue as well with our testing. What do we need to do? You know, middle school kids start testing in January and finish about the end of May. You know, we're looking at those things, how do we keep them on a good track and manage how the testing they're doing? This fall, I started in the summer with revamping our RTI programs, K-12, PBIS, K-12. Getting everybody working on a similar system. So we're managing not only interventions for small levels of students, but also the behavior side of it. Okay, addressing it like, uh, I've been here a long time, addressing it like we've never done before. Okay, from a systemic level, not each building doing their own thing and seeing how things turn out. Very laser-focused on how we're going through that stuff. Okay? And then using the forward test indicators, ACT, ACT scale to set up so we know kids are prepared for our testing as well. Okay, so those are just some of the things. Throw in co-teaching that started a year or two years ago, Pat, that we really started hitting that last year, correct? Okay, really hit at the elementary, working on it in the middle school. So our students with special needs are getting exposure to the same curriculum that everybody else is. You read the research, that's what helps close the gaps quicker than anything. Okay, getting all those things in line. So those are just a few of the things that we've done since really the first of July. When this team that has a two-point-one-year experience average in position, um, started working together. So a lot of new bodies, a lot of new ideas and quite honestly, I can't believe the work that Pat and our principals are doing to make this stuff happen. It's, it's crazy. Just watch the emails, watch the text messages about different research, different articles, all these different things that are being put together every day. Not just Monday through Friday. So we're busting, Howard, again, I'm gonna stand here, I'm gonna guarantee this is gonna look a lot different next year.
Well, the, the concern that I have is, you know, we're, we're trying to look at revamping the grading system. Going to a standards-based which should help the student achievement. Cause the kids that are not getting some of the subject matter that is being presented to them. Getting them to understand it at a, at a higher level and a deeper level. My concern at this point is you're gonna come back with the, the parent issue. Is, uh, why are you changing a system that we've used for years? Uh, when, why are we changing it to something else when you can't even get what you've been doing right? And that's, may not be fair, but that's what we're gonna get hit with and we'd get, better be prepared to deal with that.
We're working on that every day as well as we're doing this work. Again, I feel confident in this team.
So, that's, you know, that's part of my concern is, you know, we also have to deal with our parents. And they're looking out to the best interest of their students.
And I wanna work with our parents, not deal with our parents. Cause there, I feel there's a, there's a significant difference there and I think that's what we're working on. Started with our listening session, um, surveys we've done with our teachers and continuing to move forward. So I'm confident that we're gonna get there. It's a lot of work. That's why a lot of, you know, when they ask for who else is doing this in the area and we say, there's not a lot of people doing it yet. That's because it's a lot of work.
Well.
But it's best for kids.
I, I understand that it's a lot of work. I think that's why it's important that, you know, we get a little more detail at, at the board level here so we understand what's going on. Because I don't want it to be an us versus them, I want it to be a we. And in order for us to be on board with this stuff, we have to understand what is going on. And I think that's very important. It's important to me as a board member to know what, what is going on, what the plan is, you know, why are some of these things happening? You know, and do we have to put more resources, uh, or redirect resources? Get the end result, because we all know where we wanna go.
Spend the majority of the agenda on birdboard learning and January on this though.
Okay.
Do we want just report card and the components of that? And then another session, when I'm hearing how we're talking about the standards-based side of it, so the board is on the same page.
I, I, I think, I think we're gonna have to go to the standards. Before we go to the public again, we, we're gonna have to have another meeting on, on the standards-based of the board. But I think at this point, we need to look at the details of the report card.
Okay, perfect.
You know, and I, I think going forward with the standards-based, I think we need to address some of the issues that were brought forward in our first session. And I think, I think, uh, we're all aware of those, uh, based on comments received at the meeting. We just need to make sure that we go forward with that, that we have our ducks in a row. So we're better prepared for that, so. Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, then we'll move forward.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Then moving on to our next item on the agenda is our student staff recognition, uh, community recognition. Are you having there, John?
Um, the first one is to Shelley Clay, Pete Newsbaum, Jason Cooley. Thank you for providing guided tour for the Rhynex and the Rocks at the elementary school, the middle school and the high school. Their response to each of the buildings was wow. Thank you to Tom Grace and Flagship Ford, coordinating the annual Drive For Your School event at St. Chris Central. The amazing six thousand dollar donation from Flagship Ford. The support of Tom and Ford make a big difference for our schools. Um, to the middle school building leadership team, I'll leave the names in a moment. Thank you for the efforts and hard work in making a huge difference for Kids Daily. And on that team are Jean Johnson, Brad Holzer, Pat Hook, Ben Ruskin, Rhonda Malachek, Mindy Ramberg. Chance Langness, Chris Jardine, Cap Brosmer and Amanda Olson. Um, a thank you to Brian Peterson, um, who leads our bus garage. Thank you for doing a great job setting up routes, scheduling the events for special education and leading the bus drivers. A trio of thank yous to Mrs. Schmidt, Mrs. Mo and Mrs. Dumont. This is all regarding the middle school play Elf. Mrs. Schmidt was the lead director. Thank you for directing and leading over one hundred students with the middle school drama Elf. The production was amazing and your time commitment to the kids in spirit of excellence is much appreciated. Thank you also for volunteering your family dog for the play. Yes, there was a live dog on stage. And no state boards were injured during the production. Uh, thank you to Mrs. Mo for the awesome work on the costumes and assistance with the production of the middle school drama Elf. I think she sold like fifty Elf costumes if I'm not mistaken. It was, it was incredible. Uh, production was amazing and the time commitment to the kids in spirit of excellence also appreciated. And then to Mrs. Dumont, thank you for the awesome work on the set and the work as the set crew and assistance with the production of the middle school drama Elf. Uh, a thank you to John Hensman. Thank you for leading twenty-plus middle school students in strength, conditioning and leadership sessions each morning at six AM. You're making a very positive impact. Well, middle school at six AM, I'm not sure that went hand in hand. And to Larry Wagenant, thank you Larry for everything you do for the middle school. Go the extra mile every single day for the staff and students, always with a smile on your face. We are fortunate that the positive, we are fortunate for the positive impact you make, um, here at St. Chris Central. So those are the recognitions from the board for the month.
Okay, thank you, John. And thank you to all those that received the recognition and, uh, thank yous. Thank you to those that submitted, so keep those coming in. And we'll move on to the next item, which is notice of the, uh, to the board of the automatic, uh, rollover provision of the administrator contracts for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year.
Yep, uh, required to give notice each year that each administrator, uh, will receive a one-year contract extension on their current contracts. Unless the board notifies the administrator in writing prior to January thirty-first, two thousand eighteen of its intent not to do so.
We've all been duly notified and we will probably deal with this in our January board meeting. Okay, uh, next is consideration of any exemption to our youth options, uh, program approval. As I understand, there was a, uh, request for an exemption, uh, from the, uh, spring deadline for this CNA program. It's a new program that is being offered to our students. And registration from the, uh, for the class as established by school board policy was, I believe, the end of October. For the following spring. And they, we are being asked to, uh, provide an exemption to those of the students. I believe we have nine of them. That would like to take the certified nursing assistant program at WITC, so.
Move to approve the exem- exemption as requested.
Second.
Okay, the motion, John, second move, David, to approve the exemption. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the motion carries. Okay, good luck to those students. They're inviting a useful program for the community, so we wish them well in our future. Okay, uh, the next item is consideration of extracurricular positions to the extracurricular model.
I feel like I'm up your log. You're probably getting annoyed at me.
Right, no.
We haven't thrown a spit watch yet.
I want to reiterate some of the things that have, uh, already been said, but, uh, as well I mentioned, it's been absolutely incredible, uh, to work with. All the administrators and Jen and Pam. It's been a whirlwind, actually splitting my time, ran over here from supervising basketball games. So hopefully I'm gonna be very brief so I can get back out there.
How are we doing, by the way?
We were losing thirty-two to nineteen, at least at half when I left, so they were game planning and strategizing. Uh, Durant's number three in the state. Uh, we're gonna address, uh, some of these things that John was touching on as far as some of these activities and, you know, the, John Hens been working out before school. Middle school students and, uh, some of these things with, um, Mrs. Hawkins and Pantry Catering. So this is phase two to the, of that plan that we talked about, uh, before that we initially approved. Uh, phase two is all of the sections highlighted in orange. And here's the breakdown of those. I've already gone over it with Jen as far as, um, it being budgetable. So uh we have Panther Catering, uh Panther Productions, this is the second in command in the tier. We have the high school play assistant coordinator. Uh right now, we just have uh one person. Doing that Amanda Arnold for our upcoming play Oliver, so we're looking at adding that assistant uh director. Uh we are currently running the middle school weight room, six AM for winter session, but that hasn't been approved yet. So we have, I mean, we have kids in there all the time, uh so approving the the winter and the spring for the middle school program. We had in there uh assistant forensics director, but. The needs we talked as a team, that that could be a middle school STEM. We could leave that off if you wanted to, but. There there is a space for something to be added there. Um that could be budget. There are needs, we just haven't really met yet to distinguish what that need is. But Brad, we were just at the ties conference today, um the technology conference. Uh we had a lot of opportunity to talk about STEM. And working backwards in our curriculum in the middle school level, that looks like uh collaborate and maybe bigger bolster the programs that we have going on in the middle. High school with Panther Construction and Panther Productions and all that stuff. So that could be a space for that. Right now, in the in the actual proposal, it is listed as. Middle school STEM coordinator. Uh so we have it at that line. And then the other positions which are already currently going on. Since the start of the school year is the elementary student council. We have two of those positions and then the elementary school yearbook. Um and then Science Olympiad assistant. Total is fifteen thousand two hundred dollars, uh which if we look at when we did the initial proposal. With the wages and benefits committee, this was phase two of the two phase plan to get all of our activities. Up to where we are in alignment with the district and the way we wanna go. And basically folding things in and redirecting them to meet our needs as of right now.
Comments from the committee?
So is that middle school STEM uh extra activity or is it within a school day? Cause when I see middle s- school STEM coordinator, I thought that was like part of their day.
It could be. Um and like I said, we could we could leave that one off. And then do some other things that we've been talking about is uh high school summer school bolstering that. The middle school STEM coordinator, that could just be more discussions. We can leave that off. It's a twelve hundred dollar item from the phase two. Those are things that Wenzel or Mr. Garrett Wenzel and Brad Holzer are talking and discussing right now, what that looks like at the middle school. We do lack a lot of equipment, a lot of uh things to do, the types of things that the high school is doing to. Get those kids that experience before they get up there. And that would be outside of the school day.
Okay, so the only thing I was comparing that to Jason is, for example, like with the high school yearbook, the part that's done within the. Language class is not compensated because that's part of their. School day curriculum, whatever. And then the part that's outside of that was or. There was some split on that. So I was just curious if it was part of their school day or was it truly?
Right now with Garrett, it's a lot of the stuff he does beyond the classroom is outside of the school day, which is why the position was created in the first place. But if if we're truly looking to bolster our STEM program and work those all the way from middle school up, that's gonna take. Those kids will be doing stuff outside of the school day regardless of the middle school tomorrow. We just don't have the programming in place right now. So like I said, that could be a future goal. Doesn't have to necessarily be out there, so you can approve without that position in there. But it's just something that we need to keep on the forefront if we're gonna continue to do more activities, especially specifically that. Tied to all this academic stuff.
That position, I would think we would need to have it better defined of what we're looking for.
And then all the other ones like the assistant mentor for Science Olympiad, those are all defined. And based on participation numbers and the number, like Science Olympiad, you're covering whatever, ID activities or. It's some crazy number. Uh those are all defined already with job descriptions and rule clarity.
So those have those have been vetted when we went through this whole initial process of what the needs are, numbers, participation for this year. What they're doing, what their roles would be. This would cover all the needs is, this would get us to where we we need to be right now in the fall.
And and Jeff and Kay and I looked at this as part of wage and benefit previously. And at the time, we said, here's the 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 ones that are already existing. And so those were the ones we approved back in October, November, maybe October.
It would've been early October, yes.
October. And then this, as Jason said, is the phase two, which was the. Everything else not necessarily filled in today or getting reworked from how it was today into the new structure. And one of the challenges was make sure that we have job descriptions and accountabilities and all that, so. That's that's the stuff we're at. And then we had to wait for the new budget to come through to make sure that. If we were filling these, these were sustainable spends.
Like I said, with the, you know, we're meeting as a high school play, like a drama department now. Um we're talking about all those things, middle school, strength and conditioning is gonna network in with uh Matt Lang. And our, we've we've done detailed work on what they're supposed to do down there, what their roles are, what their responsibilities are. There's a full five page document on, you know, how we expect our strength and conditioning program to run from middle school all the way up through high school. Systemic in what we do.
And Kay, I I won't speak for you, but I I I think that we as a wage and benefits set, you put those things together, we're ready to. Support it and we would bring it to the board with a recommendation to approve, so.
So without that, uh middle school STEM coordinator would be fourteen thousand.
So middle school STEM should probably go into phase three and then, right? That's your developmental phase or your next phase in development.
Yeah, we could we could call it phase three if we wanted to.
You know, it'd be good for us anytime that something is being considered, you know, to to understand. For a long time, it used to work like, we have all these kids, we need to coach and we're three weeks into the season or whatever, you know. But anything that you know. Might be added or or considered or something that's being developed would be a good thing to to give us as much lead time as possible budget wise and. Just to understand it.
I agree, and that'll be the pro- I mean, this is, it's been great work by the budget uh wage and benefits committee. To put all this stuff together as well and to look at what our needs are right now. Uh but I think that work can be done. As far as looking into the future and what we wanna do with our program to really push us forward.
Okay, so.
I want to approve the request.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion case second John to approve the positions uh according to the extracurricular pay model.
Minus the STEM.
Minus the middle school STEM.
Middle school STEM.
And if we can get a better definition of what we're looking for there, I think that'll be approved also. But at this point. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh thanks, Jason.
Thank you for your time.
See, it's kind of faster, Jason.
Don't read on the way back.
I won't.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of our board pressure to approve uh post-meeting invoices for the. Month of December.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion case second John. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is consideration of the snow uh snow removal bids. For the seventeen eighteen uh through the nineteen twenty school year. It's, I'm assuming this is a three year bid then?
It is a three year bid and we had three bids. So currently M H Construction is doing our snow plowing. And you can see that they submitted a bid for the same price that they have been for the last three years. The other companies were Back to Black and Complete Lawn Care, and you can see the differences there in the cost. If we were to go with one of those.
Yes, my question when I looked at it was why the did uh such a discrepancy in the price of sand and salt?
It sounds like M and H Construction is doing a sand salt mix. Whereas Back to Black and Complete Lawn Care are doing straight salt. So M and H is including that removal of the sand, you know, in the springtime to get that the parking lots cleaned up. As a part of their bid, so there's no additional cost for that. Um with Back to Black and Complete Lawn Care, it's not necessary.
Yeah, but they're a hundred ninety dollars a ton for salt versus thirty a ton for salt sand mix.
That's, you know, that that's what piqued my interest on it is, you know, you're talking over a hundred dollars. Hundred fifty dollars difference a ton.
And the other thing that's happening with the two other companies are, I think it's at the middle school in the district office, is that correct Greg? Where they have to haul snow.
Away.
Away. And currently M H does not charge us for that. And Back to Black and Complete Lawn Care, you can see what they would charge us to do that.
Are we satisfied with M H?
Yeah. Yep.
They have all the machinery needed for the job.
Make a motion to accept the bid from M H Construction.
Okay, I have a motion Kirk second David to accept the bid that's presented uh from M H Construction. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
See, Greg, just as we're on this uh maintenance piece and it's not, have we figured out a way? Cause I noticed it with the concerts now that we had a little bit of um snow. That traffic has to cross, the pedestrian traffic has to cross over that island in the parking lot. And it looks like we cleared it, but by clearing it, then it just became all ice, so. I don't know if we need to pull students out there to help uh guests get over that island. Otherwise, they have to walk all the way around that traffic island. Either to the uh left or right of the auditorium entrance and it's just. Seems cumbersome for uh those attending the uh auditorium performances to get over that island when it's bad weather. I don't know if there's anything we can do to put sand or something and I know it'll kill grass, but. Seems like we gotta get it safer somehow.
Yeah, we're we're working on, while we, I think we've gotta reformat all that parking years out there. Especially for the handicap.
Yeah, Full House the other day with a game and a concert or a play or whatever, it was full.
We've talked about our long range plan of putting a walk through there, much like, you know, uh middle school or elementary has through those and then um. Handicap spots arcing for the auditorium.
Oh, at that end as well.
So that's in the plan, so maybe, yeah, maybe killing grass isn't a big deal because it'll.
No.
Be killed next summer anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else on that then? Okay, then we'll move on. It is consideration, second reading of revised board policy three sixty one point two. Library media, uh library materials selection. We went over this in our meeting on the twentieth. And I don't believe there are any changes at that time.
No, in any event of three uh for consideration, there were no changes from last time. There was a discussion about library media specialist being the one person in charge of final say, but um there were no suggested edits.
Okay. With that, I entertain a motion to approve policy three sixty one point two.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion Kirk second John to accept uh the revised policy. Three sixty one point two on library material selection. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the second reading of revised policy three sixty two point one interlibrary loan. Have a motion there.
Motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, a motion Kirk second Kay to uh approve the revised board policy. Three sixty two point one interlibrary loan. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is consideration of eliminating board policy two hundred dot eight nine zero. Policy for selection of instructional materials for St. Chris Central School Media Centers. On approval of replacement policy, which we have just approved. Okay, I have a motion Scott second Kirk to approve eliminating policy two hundred dot uh eight nine zero. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the consideration of eliminating board policy. Two hundred dot nine zero zero citizens request for reconsideration of instructional and library materials. Which I believe is covered under.
The new policy.
The new policy that we just adopted. Okay, I have a motion Scott second David uh eliminate board policy two hundred dot nine zero zero. Citizens request for reconsideration of instructional and library materials. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, uh judges are needed for the FBLA uh Region One Leadership Conference. Request from Nick Hogg, I guess.
It's Saturday, February third from about eight to noon would be the judging.
Yeah, are there any qualifications other than being a one body?
More money and interested in judging.
Be judgmental.
So if you know of anybody or if you'd be available, uh I guess.
I did it last year. It's actually, it's great activity. It was a lot, a lot of students here.
You said February eighteenth?
February, Saturday, February, Saturday, February.
Okay, so if you're interested, you'd let Nick or uh Tim, no? Or Kirk. Okay. Next item is important upcoming dates. We have our board learning meeting scheduled for January eighth. January uh seventeen through nineteen is the uh WASB State Convention in Milwaukee. And January twenty second is our next regular school board meeting. At seven PM here. District office. Are there any other dates that are missing at this point?
Uh just for the good of the order, the the alive dinner is next Monday from five to seven. It's before the high school band concert, so it's at the High School Commons, five to seven. That's a great fundraiser and it's all money that's returned by the school into the community, the teachers or families that have needs.
Okay, there's uh no other business to be covered at this point. I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion David second John to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
We actually let Howard end the meeting.